All right, it's 6:30, so we're going to get started. All right, a big welcome to the November meeting, Prescott City Council. We've got some guests here tonight that have traveled a long ways. We've got some that haven't traveled as far. Good to see Ms. Jackson again. Foggy night in Prescott, Arkansas, as you can tell. But everybody's looking forward to eating a lot on Thanksgiving. Amen?
Amen.
All right, we'll start off with Stan and Brother Curry to give us opening prayer, and we'll follow that with the pledge of allegiance.
Good time, God, we come this evening thanking you for your grace and your mercy. We thank you that you've allowed us to see another year as we enter this Thanksgiving season. Our prayer that those people who are lacking food will be fed. Those who are lacking a place to stay will find shelter. Father, we come today to thank you that things are as well as they are in all of our lives. We ask that you will bless our nation, bless our service, men and women all over the world. And Father, we pray that you bless our community, that we can come up with ideals that would add value to the lives of our citizens. In Jesus' name we pray. Thank God. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, in your packet, you should have a copy of the minutes from last month, the October meeting. We need to get approval on those. Who did the second? Okay, Curry?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Meeks?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Ane?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
All right, you should have a copy of the financials for the month of October 2023. We need to get approval of those. Hey, Curry?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Meeks?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Ane?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
All right, going down the agenda, under reports, Chamber of Commerce Director is absent. Chief of Police, she's absent, but I've got a little news there. All right, I've got good news. Not too many people know this. I think me, Julie, and Chief I was contacted by Grace Henley. She is the Deputy Director of the Public Events and Training for the Office of Arkansas Attorney General, Tim Griffin. She told me I got the honor, and Julie happened to be with me, so I said, Julie, you get the honor. So Julie and I both got the honor of contacting Chief Ann Jordan to let her know that she's been chosen as the Officer of the Year for our whole county. Chief Ann will be honored at a luncheon in December at the Benton Event Center. So when you see Ann, it's public now, so everybody knows, so congratulate her. Oh, yeah, we got to call them and tell them how many. They said you could bring as many as you wanted, so. We just got, they said, just make sure we give them a number. All right, so next on the reports, Mrs. Mary Goddard, Economic Development Director. We got the old Russ chair out again that you're used to from all the other years. This is pre-COVID meeting tonight. We're back old school.
You know, people that don't like change really messed me up with this seating arrangement today. This used to truly be the hot seat.
That was it.
It was the hot seat. One time I had to wear a bulletproof vest. Good evening.
Good evening.
You will have there in front of you, you've got the sales tax information, and if you'll notice, there is a large increase in the month of October. I have not had time, you know, we usually break it down and do the analysis of which areas went up, and have, just have not had time to do that. So I will do that here in the near future to see what the big, what the big increase was on that. Also, you'll have pictures of our last leadership session, which was education. We went to the Prescott School District, and Mr. Cool was our host. We went to Nevada, and Mr. McCoy was our host there. And then to UAHT, and Casey Curtis was, was our host there. So that was their actual last session that they had. And we will have the leadership graduation on December the 7th. We'll actually have it here. That's the same day as the Christmas parade, so we did bump back our graduation. So it'll start at 7:00, and the parade will start at 6:00. So hopefully, there's not, not a conflict there. But very proud of the class and look forward to honoring them on that day as well. The other thing that you have at your seat are pictures from our Explore Success, which is our eighth grade event that we work with the career tech teachers here in Southwest Arkansas and the economic development people in this region. We put on this event to try to start exposing eighth graders, we do this every year, to all of the different types of careers that are in this area. And this event came about from a lot of our manufacturers, and actually, Firestone at the time was one of them too, that felt like a lot of our kids didn't realize a lot of the manufacturing jobs that they can have here in this area and make some really good money. So in that, we, we've included other things beside manufacturing. We try to address healthcare. We had just a lot of different, it was a really well-rounded event. We had about eight hun, over 800 eighth graders that came, and we were very pleased. Ivory and the mayor and Julie and Pat Dimes, and Form Ford, they all helped. It takes a lot of people to pull off this event that was held at Hampstead Hall, so very proud of that. Also, if you see, or when you see Tara out and about for LT McDuffie and Farnell, they worked really hard last week and even a little bit the week before on getting the town decorated for Christmas, and it looks really nice. I will come up on Thanksgiving night, on Thursday, and turn all the lights on. They get it put out, but we don't officially turn it on until after everyone has celebrated Thanksgiving. But she worked really hard, so please give her a shout out when you see her on that as well. And that's all I have tonight, unless you have questions for me.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Okay, we go down to tonight's business. And we're not quite ready yet on the Bushogon contract. We're still working on that, so we'll go next. If you've noticed on the news lately, and I saw it on 10 o'clock news and I saw it on Facebook, we talked some about Climate Vision last month and the weather radar. KARK4news, you can get on that Facebook page, KARK4news, and go down to four days ago, and there's an article titled, "New Radar in Southeast Arkansas Addressing Gap in Severe Weather Coverage." And it even has a picture of the, the big ball that we're talking about putting on top of one of our towers. And it has pictures of guys standing up on top of the water tower, but you don't have to worry about me doing that. But this was in Dermont, Arkansas, and we've got those people with us tonight. Perry and I have already met Tara out at the site. And we met Emily, and Emily couldn't be here tonight. So Bryce is filling in tonight, and I think they're going to do a good job. We're going to put them in the hot seat up here as Mary calls it. And we also have Perry to answer any questions. We're going to be talking about weather radar. And there we climb up these.
Hey, I am going to turn my screen this way, and if I need to pass my, I messed up and did not bring a better presentation tool. Left it at home with my daughter. So just let me know, let me put it in presentation, if you guys can't see it, or if we need to go back to anything, okay? So I'm Tara Good. I'm our VP of Radar Operations and Partnerships at Climate Vision. And as the mayor alluded to, we just turned on our first radar in the state of Arkansas, and we have four planned for the whole state. It was a really exciting moment. It was actually one of our most exciting installations, just the state and the community rallied around it. So it was a great story. As you said, that was one of the best jobs that we've ever seen done. So we're proposing a very similar project with you guys, a gap filling partnership. And I'll walk through what that means here. First things first, I always start with our team because I understand having, I spent 10 years in public service myself responding to weather disasters. And I've stood the last 10 in weather, and I know how I would have felt if some private company came and was proposing a project. I would think there's some big corporation or something and maybe be nervous about interacting or engaging with them. So, oh, can you see? I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, let me turn it, sorry. So I always start with, we're real people, and we're not, we're people who have been invested in whether our entire lives or public service, or a blend of both. So you have me that oversees the team, and then Emily, as the mayor mentioned, she is kind of my right hand on all of our installations. Bryce just joined recently and is in Kansas, so he's not too far from here, and he's helping site our radars. And then we have a meteorologist, actually two meteorologists on the team here who help get you trained and onboard into the data that we're going to share with you. And then Riley basically makes sure you guys don't have to worry about anything during an installation, and Brent keeps our radar operational. So I just want you to know that we're real people, and we're very much invested in not only just weather surveillance, but also just the communities we work in. So in very short, simplistic terms, this is why Climate Vision exists, is to fill gaps in observation, and I'll show you guys what that means. If it's not in this wheelhouse, it's not in our wheelhouse. This is exactly why we were founded and exist today. What we're proposing to you guys today is a public-private partnership to essentially help us find a home for our radar. And then in exchange for that, we would give you all your public safety folks, your public works folks, access to the data that we pull from our radar in real time. And then we're also doing a lot of work at the federal level with weather forecasting offices and NOAA themselves. So we're, we're basically trying to get the data into the hands of people who need it most. So just to explain a little bit about what we mean when we say gap, we're not saying that we don't have a really good weather radar network in this country. We really do, it's the gold standard, but because the earth is curved and because Doppler technology works the way it does, there are these low-level gaps. And that's where a lot of these kind of volatile, really challenging situations can arise. It's a pretty active weather day today, so Bryce and I were just watching weather, and some of our radars, I were sitting over there just to keep an eye on things, because you could see things in the lower level that you couldn't see up in the higher level because they were in a gap. So we are basically trying to turn this map right here blue. So this represents everything that's in a gap in the lower level. And so a lot of the communities we work with say, well, why aren't you here talking to us? It's because you guys live in the center of that gap, which I'll show you guys a picture of that in just a second. This just gives you an example of what we mean when we say gap. Again, very much the low level. We are not looking to replace any of the good work that the Weather Service is doing. We're here to supplement and complement and help them as well. And so this is zeroed in right on your area. So where you see orange is your nearest National Weather Service system. And then where you see the blue is where a Climate Vision system would live. So as I said, you guys are right there in the center, and that's why we're here talking today. Each of these circles represents 60 miles. So not only would you obviously help your community for sure, but this would provide regional benefit as well. Basically, we're trying to meet the nearest next ranks that surrounds you guys. So to show you guys a couple of case studies, I tend to start with the type of radar that we use because you, as leaders in your community, would probably get a lot of questions about that. The moment a crane shows up and starts lifting this ball up into the air, your constituents go, what is that thing? So we install these X-band weather radar systems. These are very different than what the National Weather Service installs in what you might see from a television station. They're very small and compact. They're very, very high frequency and very low power. So they're very safe, they're licensed by the FCC. It's not going to cause any issues environmentally or from a public health perspective. It's a very commonly used technology. A C-band is as well. It's one that television stations often will go by. It's a bit bigger, a bit more expensive, and it's kind of a crowded frequency, so you're seeing less and less of those. And then the S-band systems are what the National Weather Service uses, and only they are allowed to use it. So our radar is perfect, we're just situating in between the systems so that it can complement and help. I have a couple of case studies to show you and many more. We have 22 radars installed to date, so we're getting a case study just about every day, as you can imagine. And we install two to three per month. But this was an early one, and I just liked this one because it was one that immediately showed the impact of, and filling these gaps in observations and how it can help a community. So this was in Georgia, and we were actually just getting ready to finish our configuration of the system. We had people on the tank that day just doing final hookups and things. And we saw bad weather moving in, and we said, guys, you've got to get down. Let's turn on the radar and let's see what we can see. The minute we did, this is the tornado hook that we caught. This particular tornado hook, we caught at 9,000 feet. And because the nearest next rack couldn't see it, because they were looking way above the head of that community, they weren't able to see it for, until it was about 7,000 feet. So it was about 18 minutes later. And that just kind of demonstrates the work that we're doing in partnership and coordination with them, so we want to get this information into the right hands so they can provide the right points. Beyond just filling the gap, which is obviously kind of our core need and goal here, the particular radars that we use, they're very, very high resolution. So I sort of liken it to like a television, you know, if you go from analog to digital, or you go from, you know, low def to high def, it's a very high resolution radar. So, you know, if you're a public safety or a public works, and you're looking at this real-time data feed, or you're a forecaster, say, at a television station or even at a weather office, and you can see something with the granularity that you see in this left-hand image, it can definitely give you just a little bit more information about the weather situation that is unfolding on the ground. Near further away, when you're using a different type of technology, while you might get more range or a little bit more power, the resolution is a little bit more limited. So again, we just couple these together so that they can work in tandem with the other services. So just to talk a little bit about the project, this is kind of a key concern and certainly one that Perry's concerned about, and obviously the leadership here. We do a full engineering workup on any tank that we touch. We are assuming all the liability risks, so we want to make sure that whatever we do is not going to hurt or inhibit anything on that tank. It does not touch the water supply at all, it doesn't have any kind of impact on that. But we want to make sure that it's structurally sound, whatever we're placing on there gets a stamped, sealed, licensed engineer, sympathize on it. And then, then when he says, yes, this is good, let's say Perry and the leadership says this is good, then we could kind of bring the system. From that point, we do full construction, drawing, workup and all of that. So this is a package that we would give to you all as leaders and to keep in your files as well. And then everything's insured, so we assume the liability and risk. If something happened on this tank, let's say we, you know, five years down the road, and somebody didn't like the way that a weld was or something, we would address it and assume that, that risk for that issue. We haven't had that happen, and I don't anticipate, but I just want you guys to know that we would. These are a few examples of our installations. We install them on a lot of different things. Water tanks are the most common because they clear any kind of blockage that might be out there, a hill, a ridge, a building. It's just a very common installation method. But we do buildings as well. You can see we install on all different sizes also. So we've been on anything as small as 50,000 gallon, up to a million gallons. And we've been on, I think that was a seven-foot story building here. And I think we're about to do a 12-foot story, or 12-story in Texas. So talk a little bit about the data access. So a lot of the communities say, well, how can I use it? This is not a public-facing data feed, because this is raw data that we would be giving our communities access to. So there are a lot of third-party, like if you're used to looking at your phone or something, that's gone through some kind of interface, some kind of quality control or process before it gets into the hands of, you know, the public. And there's a lot of safety reasons for that, because you want to make sure warnings and alerts come from those authorities. That said, for folks like Perry and his team on the public works, for you all as leaders, for school boards, things like that, this real-time feed can be very helpful. In my own public service capacity, the first tornado I responded to was an EF4. And our high school, this was in South Alabama, took a direct hit, and we lost eight kids in that event. We were sitting there trying to figure out when to let kids out. And now this was early 2000s, before technology had advanced to where it is today. But that's the exact kind of application, that's a very common application. If you're trying to figure out maybe where to sandbag if you have a flood-prone area or something like that, it's also another way. And it's not something where we would just give it to you guys and say, good luck. Our meteorologist comes on site, trains whoever wants to use it. You know, it could be your police officers, it could be your fire department, of course Perry, and you all if you wanted to participate as well. A lot of people say, okay, how do you guys pay for this? This is perfectly free for our communities. The partners that we work with pay nothing for this technology. We monetize that in other ways. So we have a couple of ways. One, we sell other things besides radar data. So we sell forecasts and things like that, and that helps us underwrite the cost of these radars. The folks who started the company, myself and a lot of other people on our founding team, were kind of frustrated by communities who lived in gaps trying to go get grants for radars, and then they get it up and maybe have to turn it off because the cost is just, you know, exorbitant, and it's hard to really maintain and operate. So we wanted to find a way to provide a public good and obviously be able to underwrite the cost. So that's how we do it. We do sell the real-time radar data as well, or maybe the archived data to a variety of industries, which you see out here. And like a television station could elect to buy it at some point if they wanted. But it's never contingent on that. We just bring it, and we kind of build it, and they will come approach. So there's not any, any moment where we'd be asking for any funds from the city. And then finally, our last slide, our timeline, it's really kind of up to you all. We have zeroed in on a tank that's a good location. It's a suitable location, and Bryce has a, has a site plan as well that I think maybe he shared with you, Perry, or was going to share with you. And from our perspective, it would be great. We would need to run some structural and all of that, of course, but it appears that it would, it would work. We walk through that, and then, of course, you guys decide from your perspective whether or not you wanted to move into this. There is a lease template that we use. You guys are free to obviously change it however you like, we just have a good starting point. And then we could get the radar installed. We always have them on order, so it's not, you know, a situation where we have to wait. Typically, it's about 90 days from the time we prove it. I think Dermont was six weeks, if I remember. But we, we get it up pretty quick. It goes through a 30-day burn-in, and then a lot of communities like to celebrate it together. Like today, I was in Texas, down in Reno, Paris, Texas area, and we were doing a radar dedication and celebrating the public safety folks, just really saying, hey, thanks for partnering with us on this. And we would love to do the same here as well, if you guys are interested. And that is it. Questions, comments?
I have a question.
Sure.
With your radar, will you all do anything in line of helping with the weather siren? You know, you got the radar updated.
Yeah.
You need, the city would need kind of a little help with the siren.
Yeah, absolutely. So that's exactly the intent, is that it would give you more visibility into what's actually happening. So you probably, when you, when you live in a gap, you normally have like one of two scenarios. One, your forecast is saying one thing's going to happen that's really bad, and then it doesn't happen. So your public safety, you know, teams get chinned up and they get ready, or maybe they even alert with the sirens, and then nothing happens. Or vice versa, they, you don't get notice that something's happening, which is obviously much worse. And then it comes anyway, and then you weren't able to alert on the sirens, etc. So this information will tell you with more clarity what's actually happening. That way, you don't have to kind of be guessing. And then you can get a bit more precise and accurate about when you sound your alarms. So, and that's one thing that we walk through in training, is how you can use it to help you with things like that.
So we actually get a trade-off. You get the location, and we get the services.
That's right.
Nobody, we don't pay you, and you don't pay us.
Okay, the language, if we're talking to our residents and the people that's in, in the community, just maybe in, maybe five or 10 words or something, what could be a quick thing to tell them what this really is?
This will fill a gap in coverage so you have more accurate weather information.
Okay, that's good.
We, when you guys elect, if you were to move forward, you elect to do a press release, we also have a template that you guys can use to share with your community that at a very high level covers all of those points, because you do tend to get a lot of questions. And I can send this as well, too, in case you guys want to take a look at it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for having us, guys, we appreciate it.
All right, is there any more discussion, or we got a motion to approve it, or what y'all thinking?
I would move we approve it.
It's a win-win.
Motion by Ivory, second by Gillis. Curry?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Meeks?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Ane?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Welcome to Prescott. See how easy that was? Is it up yet? Got it up yet?
Another level of safety for our citizens.
Mr. Chris, come on, come forward. As y'all know, Mr. Chris Hopper is our sanitation department head and our landfill crew and our street department. And Chris is here tonight. Me and Chris have been doing a lot of talking and figuring, and we want to get y'all's opinion and let y'all discuss something tonight that we've been talking about and concerned about for a little while. So I'm going to let Chris get it started, and we're going to have a good discussion, see if anybody's got a solution tonight.
Well, how everybody doing, first off?
Doing good, and you got it.
Well, anyway, I'm here to talk about a little bit. Last past few months, I mean, we've been having issues. I mean, a lot of issues. Not, I mean, not just, just out of contractors, out of citizens. I mean, as you all know, city run, free land service. We don't, we don't charge our citizens for it. It's not part of our trash as well. It's just a free service the city gives the citizens. Well, what they doing is, they cutting down whole trees. And putting it off on the city. Basically, what they doing is abusing, abusing the city service. So me and Matt talked, and what we came up with, did you give them a copy of this ordinance, Mary?
I haven't given the copy of the new one yet. I was wanting to see sort of which way they go first.
All, all the ordinance is that the city will not pick up tree trunks and limbs. I mean, if you, if you cutting a tree down, you trimming a whole tree down, the city shouldn't be responsible, whether you're a contractor, whether you're a homeowner, citizen, whatever. The city shouldn't be responsible. That's abusing the city of free service. But this is an issue, this has been an issue for months. And I, I wanted to address it with the council so we can amend this ordinance and come to a head about it, because our old ordinance is not very detailed. It's not very detailed. It only, the old ordinance speaks on contractors. Then we amended it in 2009. Then we amended it in 2019 and we put the size on it, six feet long, six inches in diameter. But it's not very detailed to anyone that's cutting down a tree. Now, if you want to cut your crepe mowers or trim your bushes or something like that, that's fine. But when you go to cutting down a whole tree, it's a problem. We ain't in the logging business.
I have a question. What if, say like a storm or something? I know you, you hadn't addressed that. But if a storm or something blows over a big tree, what?
That's mandatory that the city pitch in ahead. We, that's automatic. I mean, every department within the city.
I was going to ask that to happen.
You basically talking about citizens.
Citizens or contractors. If they, if they trimming a whole tree, all of them, they should be responsible for all of that, basically.
Along with, I see what you're saying. Do you think, Chris, do you think that maybe, I don't know, do we need to hire some extra help or something? On something like this?
No.
Now, the reason why I'm saying this, I know what, I know what you're saying and I know what you're saying, be with you. But if you got people trying to clean up, our city look bad. I would just say point blank. And people trying to clean up, I'm looking at Kenny, any way we can help? Do y'all see what I'm saying?
We trying out.
I know some of them. I know what I'm saying.
We do help. What they, what people is doing, they cutting whole trees down.
Yeah, I understand that.
They, they'll take the big pieces, believe in little pieces for the city. If you can haul a big piece, you can haul a small piece.
Yeah.
And it just, it ain't fair to our contractors either. We got contractors, people who do this for a living. So if, if a citizen can go cut their trees down, why can't a contractor cut the trees down and put it on the city as well?
But you, I understand what you're saying. I know you're being big.
If I can hire somebody, if I can hire somebody that's going to cut my tree for $200, but I call that contractor and he tell me $2,000, I'm going to get that one that say $200. And the one that say that's going to charge me $200 is going to put it out on the city. But the one that's going to charge you $2,000, he going to haul his off. So let's make it right for everybody. If you can cut down a whole tree, haul it off.
So if you hire somebody to?
We need to amend this ordinance. Well, we.
So what you're saying, if you hire somebody to cut your tree down, whether they charge 200 or 2,000, they should be allowed to, you know, get rid of this, be responsible for getting it out of the yard. I don't have a problem with that. I had to get it out of mine.
The only size y'all want to handle is like trucks and stuff like that.
She had some work done behind her.
I sure did.
And they got hauled it off. The city ordinance already states that, which I don't know if he was a contractor or not, but he was over there with equipment, so, but he did haul his, his limbs.
I had some work done, but the guy got upset and left because he said someone had stopped and said something to him. So I ended up having to pay somebody to haul the rest of it off because someone had stopped and said something to the man that was doing it previously.
Okay, the ordinance that Chris was talking about, 2019. The only thing that we want to change on it, in 2019, under C, it says any limbs to be collected by city must be no longer than six foot and not bigger than six inches in diameter. So on the one I just passed out, we changed C. The City of Prescott will not pick up truckloads of tree trunks or branches over six inches in diameter and no more than six feet in length. The owner must make arrangements to have the non-conforming sized limbs and tree trunks hauled off by the hired individual who did the tree service or by another person or persons of the owner's choice, not the city.
Okay, so what do we do when they don't?
Usually when they, usually what my guy, they'll see it in their car and I go check it out. I tell them leave and I make, I make contact with property.
Yeah, he does a good job of that. But we have two or three people that do this for a living that are in the business and they have costs and expenses and theirs might range from a thousand to 2,000 a tree. And then we have the people that just go out there and cut the tree and leave it and get their 200, 300. That's where we're running into the problems.
What are we doing there? We are amending this ordinance.
Yes.
They just cut one and four over the last six years. They haul that off, the people were there.
You can't even tell.
Three days.
Yeah, you can't tell the truth.
They haul, they haul everything off.
I don't think the city have time to be hauling off whole trees. I don't think it's fair.
Yeah, whenever y'all get through a discussion.
But see, that goes back to how we were doing it first. If we're going, I have a feeling, if we're going to do this, we're going to do it. You see what I'm saying? You do what you have here and stick to it, it'll work. But if you do it, somebody look over here and say, you said you're doing this, and that's what's been going on. And so all of a sudden now, you got these tree trunks. But I'm saying, I, I go along with it. If we're going to follow, we'll be pushed down. Because you know, you create a lot of problems for you and us, especially the council. We'd be the one to pass this back.
Well, I wasn't really satisfied with the answer. Shetara asked a question, what happens if they don't haul it off? I didn't.
You didn't get an answer, did you? The problem.
We didn't get an answer.
I have been running into that. And anyone, anytime that we leave it there and I speak with them, they make sure they get it hauled off. So it ain't, it ain't, we ain't ran into a problem where it just sit there and it ain't, it ain't moving. We hadn't ran into their problems this year.
So we don't need something to make sure it's enforced? I've seen, I've seen Stowe lay in the ditch a long time. I just, when she asked that question, I mean.
Are you talking about?
Change the ordinance, let's just fix.
Are you talking about limbs, tree trunks, or what are you talking about in the ditch?
All of them.
Yeah.
They say tree trunks or branches?
Yeah, all of them. And it laid it a long time.
Well, I think with him bringing this and he's talking for his department, I think that they have witnessed some things that has gone on and this is why he's wanted this ordinance amended. And we would hope that he would go with what he's, what's in here. I think that's what we're discussing, that the C part. But I believe that they are going to go along with what's in here and going to make sure that this is what they do. This is what they're going to follow. I believe that and hope that's, that's what would happen.
I just want to know what's not happening. They don't, they don't. I mean, like the house down the main street, it's been running out a long time. How you going to get it up? If you know. Same thing about the tree limbs coming in. Do we have something in place to force feet to get it up?
Well, the old ordinance, I mean, old ordinance, if you read it, it states that, it states that if it don't get them, then you can stick them with like a 50, I want to say it's like a $50 fine or something like that. Or, I mean, but I've been 17 years, I ain't seen it go that far.
Who enforces it?
I enforce it, but I can't write the ticket. I can't, you know, go that far with it, but I can just speak with the property owner. And I, I mean, lately I haven't had no issue with speaking with the property owner.
Do you feel like if you talk to them, they get up?
I do.
Well, I see this department daily, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 times a day with trees, branches and everything on the back of their trucks. And, and again, I just believe that they're going to make sure that they enforce this part of the ordinance. I really do believe that.
I feel like we got to stand behind your department 100%. But I also agree with you and Mr. Austin that we have got to stick to it and we're going to put it in our ordinance.
He said there's a storm and delight headed this way, be here shortly.
Yeah, my phone, my watch just went off.
Already beginning to light and a little thunder running.
Is radar working?
Well, we do, we're pulling this. And if it's not working, you can get back with us. We can amend it, to put a fee on it or those not being done. We need a motion?
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve this ordinance number seven for 2023.
Part C.
Part C.
Chris, is it some way that you can let the citizen know, like Carolyn said, she didn't know about, you know, the tree or the storm and stuff like that? This guy was automatically picked up, that's what you said. So is it a way that you could let them know that that part would be enforced? That you could, I mean, that you would be able to, the city would be able to pick those, that type of thing up instead of?
Saying that we're not going to do it. If we have a storm, we will take it.
Right, yes. Put that in it too. Know, like Carolyn said, she didn't know.
Who's second? Ivory's second. Anyway, Curry.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Meeks.
Yes.
Austin.
Yeah.
Williams.
Yes.
Todd.
Yes.
Aini.
Yes.
Iks. Now the fun part. An ordinance to amend the City of Prescott ordinance number one of 1992 as previously amended by ordinance number one of 2011 and by ordinance number one of 2015 and ordinance number two of 2019 to establish a collection procedure and requirements for collection services for limbs and leaves in the city. Part C, the City of Prescott will not pick up truckloads of tree trunks or branches over six inches in diameter and more than six feet in length. The owner must make arrangements to have the non-conforming sized limbs and tree trunks hauled off by the hired individual who did the tree service or by another person or person of the city's, of the owner's choice, not the city. We need a motion for reading by title only?
I don't want to move.
Second.
Okay, Curry.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Meeks.
Yes.
Austin.
Yeah.
Williams.
Yes.
Todd.
Yes.
Aini.
Yes.
Iks.
Yes.
All right, that's part of me, I can't read with my glasses on. An ordinance to amend the City of Prescott ordinance number one of 1992 as previously amended by ordinance number one of 2011 and by ordinance number one of 2015 and ordinance number two of 2019 to establish a collection procedure and requirement for the city collect service, collection services for limbs and leaves in the city. We get a motion, go to the third reading by title only?
So moved. Second.
Hey Curry.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Meeks.
Yes.
Austin.
Yeah.
Williams.
Yes.
Todd.
Yes.
Aini.
Yes.
Iks.
Yes.
Okay, now we need a move to approve, don't we?
Yes. I motion to approve the car ordinance.
Okay, Curry.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Meeks.
Yes.
Austin.
Yeah.
Williams.
Yes.
Todd.
Yes.
Aini.
Yes.
Iks.
Yes.
So moved and approved. All right, thank you, Chris, appreciate it. Okay, next under announcements, our discussion from the council. Curry's Ministries Award banquet is this Saturday night, 5 o'clock at the cafeteria. Nice cafeteria at the school. Anything you'd like to say on, Mr. Curry?
No, it started at 5, ends at 7. A lot of worthy people would be awarded, good entertainment, good fellowship. We hope you see y'all come out and support the effort.
Sounds good. Anybody got anything else?
I have something. I had a citizen to ask if anyone is in the office at the noon hour so that they could pay the bill. And I checked with Bruce and he said that there will always be somebody in the office at 12.
Yeah, some of them see our girls go out to eat or something and then they, they think they were closed or something, but Bruce feels in for them. Which we've lost two workers now. Okay, anybody got anything else before we go to the citizens' communications? Okay, okay, we have yellow card, Ms. Linda Jackson, you come forward. Linda Jackson Dixon. Just have a seat there and the floor will be yours, Ms. Linda.
Good evening. I have a problem that's been going on in my community about walking dogs. I'm an initial officer. And may I am from County Road 51 into the green. And his dogs just was lawless. I heard he had 20. I don't know about this shit, but they just walk off, walk, walk. And he got them down on their 40 years, where my baby knew he was down there at my house and I did not see it. The dogs, I don't know. All night and half of the day. And it's a problem. So, but I talked to the chief about it and I talked to the mayor about it, but they said the City of Prescott didn't have a, no warrant against the dog. So I decided to come to the committee so that y'all know the problem I'm having. He's a movie and a fan, he's been there maybe four or three months. And everybody in the community, we need $40. But he was more closer to the back of my house where my baby lives. He's down the second path. Everybody just about know where Reverend eats. Old houses, that's a house for me. And it's just me. And I just wanted to come to the committee to see what could they do. But I know I can't do nothing. So glad that longer told me to come to the committee. And talk to you all.
May I, do we have anything in place regarding walking dogs?
Me and Ann went over there and checked out the situation and Officer Stephen Corneyale. And we checked out the situation and then we went on down and approached the land owner, home owner, dog owner. And Chief Ann and Officer Corneyale talked with him. And he, I'm not sure what they told him, because at that time I was asked to wait in the car, but they were satisfied by him at that day, what he told him he was going to do with the dogs. So, but I didn't hear this conversation, so I would not be repeating the facts. repeating the facts.
How many dogs do he have? I was told he had 20.
It's too many dogs and more.
I don't know if we approved, but I was told him to rely on us.
What, what did we do?
So what day was that they went?
Uh, we went two, three weeks ago. Wasn't that about right, Ms. Jackson?
What did we do? Uh, you know, we have another problem. Remember we had the roosters?
We had the roosters. For about three months.
What did we do about that? And we, we, did we, did we come up with something on that rooster?
Well, the, the landowners, um, sort of eventually saw it was a problem, didn't want to be a problem in the neighborhood and everything sort of worked out on that.
Well, I, I might as well speak, but I have to say that. And it's gonna be a problem later on when you get one because they're not gonna keep the area clean. And it's more down my end than it is the other neighbors. But the other neighbors, we would see. And they said if, 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 if I get a petition, they would be willing to sign it. Cause they really, dogs.
Is this at night too?
Yes, at night too.
I'm, I'm personally a dog owner, but my dogs are in at night. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I might.
It's gonna be another problem because he don't keep his yard up. He's just got junk and stuff nasty everywhere.
Wes, Wes has talked to you about it. You got anything to add, Wes?
I.
Lieutenant Wright.
I talked to the owner of the dogs. He moved from county to the city. Talking with them, he complained about the dogs barking all the time. And he did try to be somewhat sympathetic and move some of them inside at night. And he's looking to possibly move some of them back out to the county if he can find a place to put them. But as of right now, I don't believe in the city ordinance for the dog ordinance, that there's anything that pertains to them being a nuisance, which could be something we might need to possibly have continues on. And it doesn't, I don't believe it limits how many dogs you can have either. I'll have to do some more research on the city ordinance. I don't have a copy. If I didn't know when she was gonna be here, I'd have her copy.
Well, maybe we, we need to look at drawing up something to, uh, maybe we need to look at drawing up something.
Well, we need, we, we need a lawyer on that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
We need to get a lawyer.
But not only dogs, but any animal, roosters, whatever.
Let the lawyer kind of tell us what the.
What we can do. Cause like I said, that's just one. That's just two. We got roosters, now we got dogs. We, we need to come up with something.
Well, on cows and horses, you got so many hooves per acre.
Race now is similar, pretty good.
You know, you got, you limit it to what you can have per acre. And maybe you have to do that on dogs too. We need a lawyer to make sure what we're doing is legal. I think all of us has had the experience that, that sometimes, Linda, I lost a lot of sleep because of barking dogs. I don't know how to handle it. I don't even, I don't know how the police can handle it. I just don't. Maybe we need some guidance from.
Well, he spoke about an ordinance that, a ordinance that they already have. I think that's.
It's the city ordinance for.
I just need to go back and look at.
Vaccination.
Like you said, lawyer, you have to sweep the house, right? But carrying on all night long, that's pretty bad.
I spoke with the family that got all the dogs as well. They do have about 20 each a walk. The guy said he risked them. He said he risked them. Well, I spoke with animal control officers about the situation as well. He said, "There is no law on this all having a dog." But he said, "A council, a council, a council can adopt avoidance." But it's, it's kind of tricky. It goes to where like, if the dog over a certain age, the dogs over a, a dog keep having puppies, puppies, puppies. It's so old. After they get over a certain age, you have to size them down. And to me, only got four dogs. But there is no law on this. $100.
Thank you, Chris.
But I'd like to inform the council, make the decisions on that. We get an attorney and know what direction we need to go. It is a problem and we need to solve it. I mean, it's strange, people have a house full of dogs. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Linda. Anybody got anything else? Okay, can we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Say, second.
Yes, I see.